Especially ones that live around where the conference.
People come like sign in and they they believe on the fella or whatever.
Happens all the time. We get we probably got fifteen or twenty of them to sign in. They go home. They come back the next sign in. They sign in, they go, they come back the last day for the breakfast when they're there.
All right, this time we'll call the regular county commission in order to certify them before we move on.
I think it.
I did.
It's blue.
Arpa, you know, what he brings on by. Here's your senior tech. She coming over for that?
No, okay. The two boxes, they've been reviewed by all three offices again.
Roughly one hundred and forty of them.
I'll wait for.
All favor. I'll let you guys know our assessed evaluation has now reached over six hundred million. Which, you know, we've gone into class two. But you've got to float a class two county for five years before you change. It's that fast. You're probably going to put a class one before you finish by. Things are moving. A lot of the stuff evaluation going on. Greg?
He's back there.
You can get close, we can kick him in the shin. Kick that direction.
Yeah.
What can we help with?
Question is, Wood Road, I guess, I don't know. I don't know if I'm supposed to introduce myself or anything or.
No, you're fine. I think I know what you're here for and I'll take care of it.
Basically, I'm here because Wood Road, we've me and my wife bought a place down here called Rich's Last Resort and it's called Cracks Last Resort now, Duke, Missouri. We use a place called Six Crossings for our put in spot. I've been there for seven years. We've been there for seven years using the same. Same roads to get in and out of Six Crossings and basically Six Crossings to me is like an island almost. It's it's a road goes in the backside which is now, I understand is supposed to be a county road. When it comes up to the the island itself and there used to be a road that went straight through and dropped right off on the bank on the other side. People have claimed now that that is their, I'm not saying it's not their property, you know, they're claiming as theirs now where the road used to be. And it filled in with dirt and gravel when we had the last flood in November fourth. And now they're saying they put up no trespassing signs. And I understand the county will not open that road back up. I just want to know why we can't open the road back up if it's been a road for this long and I can go back forty years with people local. Who say that road has been there and been used as as a, you know. My other thing is if we go with what we got now, I'm probably going to be out of business. Because there's no way, if you've ever been to the Six Crossings on a Saturday morning, Sunday morning, or Friday morning, or any holiday. There's no way that you can get in and out. It's it's a one way road right now. You got us jammed. That back road fills up with mud and water and usually even in July, you're walking through water that deep at least to get in and out of that road. I've got pictures of it now. I took yesterday afternoon before the water got up really high. The entire road now is underwater. Getting that what's called the county road to get in and out of there. I stepped off last night from where they put their signs up off the edge of the county road that used to go straight, straight through to the bank. I stepped off twenty seven steps. It's like nitpicking or something to me. Twenty seven steps. Give me twenty minutes with my skid steer and that thing will be open. It's not my property though. But my question is, why is it not going to be reopened if it has been a road for that long? That's my question, I guess.
That's the first I've ever heard of it not being reopened.
I mean, I've got some.
I've dealt with, I don't know who the guy is, but.
He died.
Yeah, it's been.
He passed.
Now his kids have got it. Now they've come down.
And they're putting up signs.
I've been there for seven years. I've never seen his wife. I've never seen any kids or anybody ever been there. I think it's just a game of trying to.
Do you guys have his contact info?
Steve, I lost all my stuff in flood, guys, and we we were wiped out. I had thirty feet of water in my living quarters.
I didn't even want to come back.
We lost bathroom. We lost mini cabin. We lost canoes. I lost the three vans. I got a bus that I'm still working on trying to get going. I've been hammered hard. Now you're now they're going to shut down this road that's going to go maybe sixty feet.
Yeah, it goes straight down. I can't imagine why that's not the county road.
Every time. Every time it's ever flooded, I mean, if there was a few rivers that left, we've always.
Especially ones that live around where the conference.
People come like sign in and they they can't believe on the phone or whatever.
Happens all the time. We get, we probably got fifteen or twenty of them to sign in, they go home. They come back the next time in, they sign in, they go, they come back the last day for the breakfast when they're there. Never. Alright, this time we'll call the regular county commission and order certified and before.
I think it.
I did.
It's blue.
Arpa, you know, what he brings on by. Here's your senior tech, she coming over for that?
No, okay. Got the two boxes, they've been reviewed by all three offices again.
Roughly a hundred forty of them.
I'll make motion.
All favor. I'll let you guys know, our assessed evaluation has now reached over six hundred million. Which, you know, we've gone into class two. But you gotta float a class two county for five years before you change. It's that fast, you probably end up with a class one before you finish your buy. Things are moving, a lot of the sub evaluation going on. Greg?
He's back there.
You can get close, we can kick him in the shin. Kick that direction.
Yeah.
What can we help with?
Uh, question is, um. Wood Road, I guess, uh. I don't know. I don't know if I'm supposed to introduce myself or anything or, uh.
No, you're, you're fine, I think I know what you're here for and I'll take care of it.
Basically, uh, I'm here because, uh, Wood Road, uh, we've, we've, me and my wife, uh, bought a place down here called Rich's Last Resort and it's called Cracks Last Resort now. Duke, Missouri, uh, we use a place called Six Crossings for our put in spot. I've been there for seven years, we've been there for seven years using the same. Same roads to get in and out of Six Crossings and basically Six Crossings to me is like an island almost, it's, it's a road goes in the backside which is now, I understand is supposed to be a county road. When it comes up to the, the island itself and there used to be a road that went straight through and dropped right off on the bank on the other side. People have claimed now that that is their, I'm not saying it's not their property, I'm, you know, they're claiming as theirs now where the road used to be. And it filled in with dirt and gravel when we had the last flood in November fourth. And now they're saying they put up, uh, no trespassing signs. And I understand the county will not open that road back up. I just wanna know why we can't open the road back up if it's been a road for this long and I can go back forty years with people local. Who say that road has been there and been used as, as a, you know. My other thing is, if we go with what we got now, I'm probably gonna be out of business. Because there's no way, if you've ever been to the Six Crossings on a Saturday morning, Sunday morning, or Friday morning, or any holiday. There's no way that you can get in and out, it's, it's a one-way road right now, you got us jammed. That back road fills up with mud and water and usually even in July, you're walking through water that deep at least to get in and out of that road. I've got pictures of it now, I took yesterday afternoon before the water got up really high. The entire road now is underwater, getting that what's called the county road to get in and out of there. I stepped off last night from where they put their signs up off the edge of the county road that used to go straight, straight through to the bank. I stepped off twenty-seven steps. It's. It's like nitpicking or something to me, twenty-seven steps. Give me twenty minutes with my skid steer and that thing will be open. It's not my property though, but my question is, why is it not gonna be reopened if it has been a road for that long? That's my question, I guess.
That's the first I've ever heard of it not being reopened.
They got, I mean, I've got.
I've, I've dealt with, I don't know who the guy is, but.
The same guy I was saying, look.
Yeah, it's been.
He passed.
Passed away.
Now his kids have got it, now they've come down.
And they're putting up signs.
I've been there for seven years, I've never seen his wife, I've never seen any kids or anybody ever been there, I think it's just a game of trying to.
Do you guys have his com- their contact info?
Steve, I, I lost all my stuff in flood, guys, and we, we were wiped out, I had thirty feet of water in my living quarters.
I didn't even wanna come back.
We lost bathroom, we lost mini cabin, we lost canoes, I lost the three vans, I got a bus that I'm still working on trying to get going. I've been hammered hard.
And now.
Now you, now they're gonna shut down this road that's gonna go maybe sixty feet.
Yeah, and it goes straight down, I can't imagine why that's not the county road.
Every time. Actually, that'd be better, county road, it would let you off.
Every time it's ever flooded, I mean, if there was a few reliable deposits left, we've always, we've always kept it locked down where people get in and out of there. And yeah, I've had to talk with the, the person that passed before and it really was terrible heated, I mean. And, and he'd kind of went on about it, but I mean, we've always kept it clean and open, but I mean, you're right, it goes by forty to fifty years where people's just. Everybody in that neighborhood's used it, it, it's a gravel bar, it goes through, I mean.
I just wouldn't know what the legality is and, and what, can we get it reopened or can we get it? Basically, there's, there's two trees right there right now.
Yep.
We removed the two trees and I would say you have people going through it that next day.
Oh yeah, well, that evening.
I don't know how they're gonna keep.
But like I say, I, I. I have no definition as to what is.
He was back, cause I think law firm rode their horses back through there too.
Yeah, they crossed the river.
That's the place.
Oh yeah.
And he, and he's approached me at least, uh, we've had three incidents, I know of myself being on the river and him coming down there forward with a gun. He didn't blow it, he didn't threaten me with it, but he sat there the whole time.
With his hand on it.
With his hand touching it, you know, then he'd do this and he touches gun again and, and starts telling me something. And I told him, I said, sir, I've been here for, this was last year and a half basically before I had any problems with him. I told him, I said, sir, I've been here for six years, and my name's on the van. I'm not hiding from anybody, I said, if you got a problem with what I do, call the sheriff, tell him the commander, let's talk about it, let's figure out what's wrong, and he never would. But, and, and several other people, he threatened on the, on the, I call it the island, he said several other go rounds with, with locals. Pulling up on them and tell them.
You know, it's, uh, whenever you got property on the edge of the river, it's a, it's a touchy, it's a touchy situation and I've asked. I've asked our local conservation agents about this before and they tell me that the river owns the high water mark. So if you wanna pull up on a.
Normal. That would be.
Yeah, normal high water mark, if you wanna get out on a gravel bar that could get covered by water, it's. And there, there was a guy down south a couple of years ago.
Sullivan, yeah.
Yeah.
Something that happened years.
Yeah, it's.
They got out on the bank and a homeowner shot him, he went to prison.
It's, yeah.
So we, we just came with you all here, hope you get a little help maybe to, uh.
I think what Kevin was telling you, the county road, he'll get, he'll get opened back up once the floods, but as far as another road is not a county road, I, I mean, I don't know.
Even though a road has been used and maintained by a county for a little while? I mean, I, I ain't gonna throw anybody on the bus, but I know some members of people are employed right now by the county who have related that before during their tenure with you all.
Some we'd have to research, I mean, you know.
Well, my next thing is then, if you're gonna research it, can you research it pretty quick? Because I'm a couple of weeks away from Memorial Day and I've got customers, uh. Waiting on the phone and I don't know what to tell them.
All I can tell them to come, I'll go, I'll move it, I'll get it to where you can get in there, but I'm gonna have to get ahold of those people and I mean, it, it's, I've dealt with them before and it, uh. I don't think they can get it shut off. I don't think they can, Dave, can we, uh, pull up, uh, get any of their contact info off of the.
Oh, he didn't like anything either.
Do you know their last name, sir?
Bramer, Bramer, Bramer.
It'll be past.
Be right next to.
Four J Horse Camp all the way.
Matt, Matt and Ann Estes and then it would be their problems next, be the next property after that. And my next question is that also is Matt and Ann own property right down to the edge of the river also, I understand. I'm very good friends with Matt, really good friends with Matt. We've gotten along really well in the last four years to see him down there. He doesn't know this yet, you'll probably be hearing from him also when he finds out about this. I didn't tell anybody about this, guys, I have not advertised upcoming this meeting, I just wanted to find out what my, uh. Rights were or county's rights were on this matter to find out if we're, you know, if not, I gotta change a little bit of what I'm doing. I can't get people in and out there, that's, there's just too many people for one-way, one-way road in there. It's bad enough on Saturdays when we can get in and out all the way around.
Yeah, you, it's traffic jam.
So, I, hopefully that you all can maybe help us out a little bit, uh, Nancy's gonna be in the same boat, Wilderness Ridge, there's another, there's another canoe camping place down there that also uses that. Uh, same area to put your people in.
Yes, we're gonna leave Memorial Day. I'm looking for a spot.
You got a cabin, he can.
I still got to do the cabin, my other one just went down the, we're moving.
Yeah. But, so yeah, we're just a little bit as to what to tell our people and how to, uh, you know, I'm getting people who are wanting to book. I've been, from Christmas, I've been putting people off and, uh. We started out with nothing down there, guys, and I mean, I've made this into a, I'm not trying to make this into a clown show down there, I'm just trying to make it a, a nice place for people to come and go and have a family.
A good weekend.
A good weekend and enjoy yourself and get away and, yeah, we're not, like I say, we didn't move here to try to make it into a world of fun or nothing like that, I was just, we're country folks, we're cattle people. We just, it's an early retirement for me, something different and I was working another job and just, it just, you know, something different of course. By the way, you all have got, this river thing down here is unbelievable to me, it's beautiful, I don't know, people, you all got a little gym down here. I don't know that you all really understand what you got sometimes.
Why they. We understand.
Beautiful place, man, gosh, and I am just, uh. It is, what it, I came down here to, to buy that place and my wife says, she goes, you're crazy. And I said, why? She said, you're nuts, I said, well, you knew that a long time ago, babe, but I said, look at this, we're sitting down near that bluff, looking at the river, looking at the bluffs. I said, man, this is just.
It's beautiful. It's like a park.
So, yeah, I guess, you know, I need to figure out what we're, I just need some help, time to figure out what we are going to be able to do here, what can I do or what should I do, you know?
You'll get your road open.
I'll get it opened up where you can use it, Memorial Day and then we'll, hopefully they contact me about it, I'll, I'd like to talk to them.
Do what now?
I said, he'll get the road open, when it comes to problems like that, you're gonna have to get all the.
Yeah.
That's not a problem, I mean, I'd be glad to let them. Talk to the guy with the gun, cause I don't wanna talk to him. I know he is not there anymore, but that was. They do not.
It's a, it's a business little weekend cabin to have. They're worse than me, I think I really, are they out of St. Louis?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
So, that's it, guys, I, I don't have anything else, I'm, I'm not here to, to trash rocks or anything, I just wanna throw it off you all, see what you, what we can do.
See what we can do about our business, cause we can't, we can't, you know, can't have a road and go down there, we can't.
So.
It's not good.
That's it with me, guys, I don't have anything else to say, uh, and there've been one.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get the road opened up where you can use it, I just ain't gonna do, I'll get it to where it's usable, I'm just not gonna make a highway, but I'll get it to where you can get in there and then. I'll probably get their information, contact them and talk to them about it.
Yeah, he took me down there last night and the water is so deep and that one you want us to go around.
Yep.
I never used that road.
Yeah, but I, we, no one.
Oh, I know, it goes up. It just makes a circle.
Yeah, most people just drop off.
If it's dry, you can go around.
And that's where we really can get in and out of right now without getting through all the water and stuff is to actually go through the, you know, the old, old one jump dropped right out on the bank, the riverbank, you know, I said.
And I mean, next.
Well, I guess here's the goal, the way it went in there, the road went in and then crossed the river and then went on out.
Used to, yeah, before my time, yeah, I heard Four J used to have a horse cab on the other side of it.
I'd go forward across there, yeah.
It changed after the seventeen flood though.
Every year it changes, like, like a circus, it goes to different attractions each year. Yeah, I'm sick, I'm sick of the floods, I want dry weather.
Oh, yeah, me too.
Yep.
Wood. Or that would be the. Right there to end the T, hang a left, go down to the T, hang another left and all the way to hoop. Turn down Washington in the woods.
Yes, him.
Yes.
Go down Patch Four, J Horse.
Run around them to me, he didn't like.
Yeah. Yeah.
I just thought, what's that, what are we gonna do there?
And he brought his dog, dropped.
Oh, he didn't like my answer, as I know it's, he calmed down, he called on me. And I said, you ain't gonna like my answer. So.
Yeah.
Then it calmed down.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want you to tell him.
Phone with him.
Yeah, I want you to say something, if he figures out, you know, you're halfway right or know what you're talking about.
Funny thing was the last year, after we had that. Uh, where he stopped me twice there and, and stopped me, talked to me. He got mad at me one time because he called me on the phone and said there's been some logs cut down there on the island and I said, oh, I, I had chainsaw on your place. And I didn't, I was not, somebody cut some logs up that drifted in on the beach, was down there and they cut them up like ten-foot sections, so when next time the water got up, they would leave. He blamed it, he said it was my, my doing and he said I was the only one that could profit from that, I said.
Long entrance, like, to the property, there's a creek somewhere in there, cause the grader turned around, he said he put the blade down in his creek, actually they turn around, but when you turn around, when gravel washes up and the blade might touch it. But he said, if you'd like, here's what we can do, we just wanna do nothing right now. Oh, no, 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 we'll just, we'll, we'll work it out.
Yeah, he had different ideas and everything, I, I, you know, I have to say, I don't, I don't quite understand it, but, yeah, anyway, that's, that's it for me, guys.
Hey, alright, thank you.
What is, what is, your title?
I'm the presiding.
Presiding chairman, sir?
Andy Hill.
Andy Hill. Greg Smith, thank you, yes, sir, thank you, appreciate it.
I did it opened up for you.
I appreciate it, sir.
He's the eastern, southern.
Yeah, yeah.
Northwest, north, northeast.
Yeah.
Out of a good day.
Good day.
Never figured that out, east and west, now you got northeast or southeastern.
Have you got, have you got something for us?
I just had a quick update, we had a meeting yesterday with A G Invest. And, uh, they're changing the way that Lee Dixon is doing business, we're gonna be a standalone, they're gonna cut us a check every month. And so we're gonna be a contractor rather than being under their whole umbrella. I'm not sure what that's gonna do for other folks, uh, they just canceled, they just shut down our sales last week. So there, there are some changes coming and basically that's, that's what I want to point out today is that. Business is gonna change with the way, uh, A G Invest has been doing, I don't know what, uh, any of the other three senior centers are gonna get into. If they don't pay, if they don't pay what they say they're gonna pay, we'll be okay. Uh, we can get some efficiencies and, and in fact, we like it better because we don't have them telling us what we can eat, what we can eat it, how we're gonna eat it and all that. We'll have to still follow nutrition guidelines.
Really?
You know, but anyway, just be aware, there's, there's things going on and they, they propose, they say it's tied to all the funding changes in the federal government and, you know, all that, but anyway, so, anyway.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got bill signed and ready?
I'm gonna.
I think we're paying.
Yes.
Um, sure.
If it rain, I'm not gonna be able to pay mine.
There it is.
And where is that, here, Wood Lane, there's Four J Horse.
Yeah, it'd be, uh. Where's the river at? It'd be right there.
Yeah.
Right there at the end where it comes, it'll be this area right in, right in here.
Okay.
What is, there's a gravel bar and then there's a slough ditch, it comes around, they come in here and circle onto the gravel bar, drop their canoes up and then circle back out that. They're just like a, a little island right there, but it's all.
Is that, is that it? That's it, right there.
That's it, yep.
But they're saying that they can't get through up here?
Well, what it is, it's right down here, the county road goes all the way down here, right? Right at the gravel bar.
Okay.
And there's two big trees laying across and they can't get in there. So the trees will have to be cut out of the way and then I think there's a hump of gravel that's gotta be knocked down, but we've always come out on that with the grader and turned around. Grader guy was down there the other day and he turned around just shy and said, yeah, it's blocked and what are we gonna do about it? But, uh.
Yeah, so, that's your river right away.
Yeah.
Got any questions or anything?
Conservation. I mean, everybody, it's been ongoing forty, fifty years, been like that, everybody's just used it. So it's a. It's a touchy situation, but I mean.
They lived in St. Louis.
You figure all your neighbors over there, you'd wanna, I mean, if you didn't live there, if you had a good neighbor, I mean, they'd take care of your place better than you would not be in there, I mean.
Cause me, I'd want, I'd want someone coming down there like that, the business won't come in through there, cause then they're gonna, you know, they wanna do business, so they're gonna keep it. Yeah. Good and tidy.
I'll tell you what, those poor folks, they, they've lost thousands of dollars worth of stuff down there from that flood and they just bought the place. It'd be hard to recoup or something like that.
I just wanted to share for me to give you guys an update, um, just on our app and our website. Uh, I've been fighting with Apple development to get our app in there. So Android is pretty easy, you just kinda go on there and they just let you do kinda whatever, but because of the way Apple's security runs, you have to do a developer deal just to make that app. And so you have to go in there and apply for it, well, we had a little problem back and forth because we're not a business, we're a government entity. So Apple makes you confirm that you're a business by a business license, well, we don't have a business license. So I had to go back and forth with them for a little while, but it took me since. April fourteenth, uh, and I finally got that done yesterday, or the day before, I'm sorry, Monday. And, uh, got it done, got it approved, they goated it, and I just got a, uh, email yesterday that our beta test didn't come out, so we'll be reviewing that. And that should be launching within, uh, the next couple of weeks here, so, uh, along with our website. And little stuff will start rolling out, and I'll be able to, you know, do all the things. No, not yet, you wanna help get rid of these tariffs? We're sitting on stuff because of tariffs right now. Oh, thank you.
Yep, Greg tipped in.
Are you gonna get a call, Kyle?
Uh. Yeah. But yeah, so. It's hard to get electronics right now.
I'm good, the website's gonna be, you wanna know, that's gonna be good.
Yeah. Yep, it will be nice. It'd be nice, uh, they'll start doing their, you can do your damage stuff, you guys can start getting, we put all your guys' emails, what's that? Yep. It'd be pretty close to that. I mean, obviously the front will look a little bit different, but the actual design, when you open that up, it'll look pretty well the same. Of the buttons and everything that's on it. But we put in your guys' email, uh, for reporting damage, you know, road damage, property damage or anything like that, the trees down, stuff like that, so that they can go online, on there, you'll get it. Uh, Pector will get it and, uh, you know, that way, it's easier for them than versus trying to call you guys or something. Uh, the notifications will all be on there, they'll be able to opt in and out for notifications. Uh, National Weather Service and hopefully eventually we can get Pector on board and we can, he can start using, and putting out notifications that way also. Eventually. So.
And. If we were closing the road.
You put that out.
We give it to you and you put it out or?
Okay. Yep, and I'd kind of rather it be that way because, so as of right now, our dispatch, um, and I believe nine-one-one and OEM. Uh, we all have a shared Google Doc, so if somebody closes the road, one of those three places puts it into that Google Doc and all three of us can see it. So we're not having to call and say, hey, did you close this road, is it still closed? So whenever we have the guys, whenever we do the flood stuff, the guys go out and they check it, if it's still closed, we still put on there. If it's still closed, we still put on there that it's closed, who it was closed by, when it was closed. And then uh, we'll have them go out, change it, you know, every few hours they go check it, if the water's coming down or whatever. And it's not across the road anymore, then we open the road back up. And so, yeah, if you guys would, if you guys close the road, just have them call back into the office. Sheriff's office down there, and they can put that on my sheet. Or call it into Hector or whoever, if they've closed it. But yeah, if you go to close one, we can put that notification out.
Yeah, I usually just text Hector what I've been doing.
Yeah, if they're, and um, Clayton or Charlie's been putting those. Those on there. They're actually the ones that came up with the form, they just shared us the, the link to it or whatever. But it's, it's worked really well. So, but it'll be, and all that will be visible on, on the app too. So even if they don't do notifications, they can go in and they can check it. And there'll be a link there for uh, MoDots also. So you can just go in and um, punch it and it'll give you three different buttons to go to. So you can check it, and it's just a forwarding deal. It's the same for, you know, all of our uh, sex offender stuff, all of that, all of those things. School stuff, so.
You guys are selling some property or something too, right? Today, or have you done that already?
Yep, um, typically the attorneys do it, but we actually had to do this, so. I think there was some. Issue. We had to write up all the papers and put out on the post, so. Yeah, something like that, it's, I don't know if there's, is there a house on it?
Oh, a home, I think, modular. I think since you turn the corner there, it's on the hill, isn't it?
I have no, I have, I mean, I saw the map. And I don't even remember how many acres it is. Well, that's what. Yeah, so. Got it done, we're getting it.
All right.
Thanks, Rex.
So you're leaving with hands. Oh, I've got a seatbelt, simple seatbelt.
Other one, the rich, the one, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I never believed in them till I started wearing them in that accident, and it's still.
You know, they're free, they come with their.
You know, the old vehicle I wrecked, it didn't have one of them annoying buzzers in it, but I just, I made a habit out of it there. But I mean, for the three and a half years I worked at MoDOT, if you got in a vehicle and you just limped it for an end. It sent and you had to keep, oh, they knew who was driving the truck. I mean, it got sent. You was getting pulled in the office like now and. Couple strikes of that and you're out of there, but I mean, you had to have it for, or you even put it to do.
I don't even notice it. When you're wearing a vest and then you hit that it's on, you go get out.
Well, if you pull up and you're in hurt, you need a quick relief. Soon as it goes into park, then.
She just moved Jeff City, um. Amy, I swear the car was still moving when I seen the door. I'm like, how in the world, she get out soon, soon as, that thing, soon as she puts it in the park, it snaps. Oh, she probably hit it at the door all at one time, I don't know. But it looked like poetry in motion.
So our new vehicles have what's called a secure lock on them, so uh, when you open the door. It'll lock the uh, the transmission till you hit a button. So it's a security feature or whatever too, but it also makes.
Who else takes the key out with that too, and it's still running, right?
It's a, it's the smart key, so. But yeah, anytime that you, if the vehicle's running and you pop the door open, it automatically. Uh, locks the transmission up, you can't get out unless you hit the button. Tricky to find the button first time. So, and then I guess the new Chevy, the new Tahoe is uh, uh, it's got a different. Trick that you have to hit a button and then. It's old as like, like the newer Mercedes.
But more to that though, so it all tries to get out of vehicle quickly, somebody can't take their vehicle and drive off.
In case you forget to lock it or something like that. And it won't come out and you'll break that shifter before, I've watched videos on it, still break the shifter.
That's a county truck I've got the, the Ford. I was on a call the other day and I was backing up, I opened the door slightly. It's not a truck. And then the shifter went.
Yeah, I was driving a friend of mine's truck and we backed up in a, in a cornfield and there was. Piece of corn stubble sticking up and it got in the view of the camera and thought we was gonna hit it. And it locked the brakes up and I hit the steering wheel and I'm like, what in the world? That's wrong with this thing, but.
They've got that too, you can turn on that uh, emergency brake assist or something.
It had it, yeah.
Stopped itself.
Yeah.
Display started to flash red.
I'm trying to pull something with my truck, the, the traction control kick on and it'll just. I wanna be like an old eighty-six model Chevy when I put it to the floor, I want it to go, I mean. I'm trying to pull something, not slip and all that aggravates me. This new stuff is.
Technology.
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna go guys.
You just did.
Cameras right there.
Yep.
You're bright orange.
Brandon, do you have anything?
Uh, no, I haven't, uh. Yeah, they, they. I gotta get up to work in twenty minutes, actually, fifteen now, um. And I, I just, when I'm at the time, I always try to stop then, what's going on, so I'm just listening. I had a, personally gone through a couple of jails. Odd communication the last couple of weeks, seeing if there was any update also on that. Better decisions.
I would encourage you to. If you ever wanted to learn what it's like. Just to see what that uh, that block down there, it's, it ain't easy. And I, I don't mean any disrespect, I'm just saying that, you know, when, when people get to asking questions about, you know, stuff like that, that's. That's a, and I encourage you questions, I, I don't like that, but it's a, it's a tough job.
I, I'm not disagreeing about the job, what I'm saying is, I had heard that there's been two administrators, communications, uncomfortable changeover. Don't email the sheriff when I need to do a jail, but I usually email the jail administrator.
Oh, that's, okay, I see what you're saying. Yeah, 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 you're talking about between you and, and the jail, so, okay, gotcha. So email or you ma, email, you mean, the jail?
So, yeah, I usually email uh, jail two or jail at PC share, J Q dot com. Unless there's a better email, but that's still where the list is coming from.
Yep, yeah, send, send it to there and um, it should be. It should still go to the, the same one.
The la, last couple of times we've set up. Uh, appointments, we'll get a confirmation about that. Uh, they, they did let us in, um, they did advise us, say it's gonna be a long time, which it was. Um, I think it took me three hours to see what people, it's not typical. But I'm still trying to give us twenty-four hours notice and I, it's so this time, I've never gotten anything back, so just kinda. Not, not knowing, I wanted to confirm that the administrator we were working with before, working with before. Um, is gone, it sounds like that's correct.
And then also, uh, you need to keep in mind that previously we were only up to, we floated between, you know. Fifty to sixty inmates and I'm up over a hundred now, so, and I still have a second amount of jail staff.
I get that, I get that.
We're a little, little strapped sometimes, but I appreciate the patience.
Think Judge Hillman might be getting a little too close to Judge Gas and Spawns and Judge Quan Spawns, but we'll see what we can do about that.
I'll leave that to you.
Well, I mean, part of it might be, you know, I, I get that you guys can file it as distribution if there's like even a. Ant's fart worth of fentanyl and something, but uh, you know, when you blast that you found, you know, a, a drug dealer. On, online, Judge Hillman is gonna be less likely to give somebody a reasonable. Bond when what we're talking about for any other herb of fentanyl, they uh, is that. So I think that might be leading to why you have a couple, or why you have a hundred rather than sixty. Like, I still think that, like, like I said, legislature lets you do it. But the amounts that, of some of these you're talking about, no, so when they are actually speaking of us. You know, we're talking a couple of brands of meth here or there that would have been possessions a year ago.
So you're saying we shouldn't put out what we're doing?
I'm saying that I think it's influencing bonds, because I've noticed bonds are higher, and I've also noticed it's because. The only, the only thing that's gonna happen is people are gonna read what Sheriff Soft's put out. And, you know, that, that's my thought is. And when the biggest thing in the news is the, this drug bust. People are gonna get mad at Judge Hillman, that he acts. Letting people out on low bonds, even though in my personal opinion, there should be no money, it should be very dangerous to the community. Well, you're not, I think most of people, you know, lots of people have been there for years, you know, we agree that those are A felonies. Dangerous felony, someone with DMH issues, that's all involved, but. I do think a lot of these distributions, if it had been anything but fentanyl, it would have possessed.
So you're telling me we're gonna adopt them?
I think that you are being used. As the tool you're expected to be in stats, but I don't.
I, I still disagree with what the legislature says is distribution. Like you're talking trace amounts of fentanyl. But you can't blame us for that. No, no, we're do, we're doing our job, I mean, but. It sounds to me like that, uh, that it, this should be a conversation that, that you're having with legislature versus law enforcement. Cause we're going by the letter of the law.
It is a conversation rather than legislature, so.
But just, we're doing what the sheriff is doing, what the people of Plask County County do, and we're putting it out just as though what they wanted them to do. And I think you can see that by the amount of uh, comments that are put in there, that we're doing exactly what the people have asked us to do. Now, I mean, I completely understand and, and see what's, what you're saying, but. On the other side of it, I, I feel as though that the sheriff and I are, um, very proud of the way that our deputies have. Conducted uh, these arrests, uh, these search warrants, and I feel as though. And I'm sorry, Brandon, I mean, you know, very disagree, but it won't change my mind if the guys are doing what they're supposed to be doing. Uh, and I think it's a, it's a great thing that the sheriff is putting out, putting it out like he is.
Well, so that they can see. Question that I would wanna know is like, you know, is your task force and your, and your SWAT team that you're sending in still not wearing cameras? Are we still not getting to know what's happening on this? Are we just taking the word that these people are confessing just because of their confessing?
There's a, there's a process for that.
Right, what I'm saying is that the policy has been no body cameras when we execute search warrants. And I think policy still know.
So what you, so you would rather, you would rather us put out our tactics. And risk officer safety. Just so that you can see every aspect of everything that they're doing in that. Point in time, because essentially that's what you're asking us to do, you're asking us to give up our tactics. Give up our confidential informants, give up our, our, our undercovers. And just so that we can, uh, so that you can see every single aspect of the way that it goes. Uh, I don't think that that's fair, I think that causes way, way too much, um, danger for my guys. And I just, I just don't, I'm gonna always err on the side of the no, because it shows off the tactics, we just can't do it.
So, I mean, my issue is, is, you know, we're going, taking the word that uh, not was done. We're, and also we're taking the word.
So you're discrediting the word of my officers.
Well, I have one of your officers lying in a deposition about assaulting one of my clients, and we're going to be releasing that information very soon.
And, and that's your right, but, um, I'll stand by my deputies.
Right, I get that that's your job, what I'm saying is. When you knock on a door and you're executing the warrant, I'm not asking for the two hour meeting beforehand, I'm not even asking for like driving up. What is the harm in turning on a camera? When they knock, and especially after the search is over and they start questioning you, because why do we have none of that on film?
You're, you're giving up communication, you're giving up movement. And you're giving up straight up, you're just giving up ta, ta, tactics, and I'm just not gonna do it. We just cannot give up that officer safety as, uh, aspect of the whole situation, because what you think. Is information, and yeah, I granted it is an information law, but if I have, if I have a camera on every single deputy that goes through that front door. You're gonna be able to pick it apart, especially every single time that you go through, cause you're gonna subpoena those records, a, and which is your right. But you're gonna be able to pick apart every single piece of that. I could sit there and I could take a camera video of every one of those guys and I could see that every single time, and this is just an arbitrary. Every single time that the guy goes through that door, he always goes this direction. If there's a wall over here, this guy ends up doing this, this guy ends up doing this one, and I just won't do it. We just can't do it, you're risking the officer's safety when you do that. I understand the information that you're looking for. But I'm not gonna risk my, my deputy's safety just because you want the information to see how he spoke to the guy. That's what's supposed to come out of court, that's what you have sworn testimony for.
So if I give you evidence that your officer lied in sworn testimony in a deposition, and I expect him to be fired?
There'll be an investigation. Just like you won't take my guy's word, I'm just gonna take your word and walk in and fire again.
Mine's gonna be on a transcript, and then you'll have the video.
Well, that's fine, if you do a deposition, then my guys will be on a, on a transcript also.
That's my issue.
That's. Oh, I see all the body cams on those young, uh, this department and stuff like that.
Most body cameras aren't only released to defense attorneys, it's a part of discovery process, you don't get a right to them like you do in Florida. Different states are different. There's no requirement, uh, the Rollup Police Department or the Falls County Sheriff's Department, I can't remember which, refuses to have body camera footage. Can't remember which one of them, they, they won't wear body cams, period, and for a while they actually had a standing, do not assist with some of the local, uh, places who do wear body cameras.
I'm sure he's not.
He's up to the department and he's, I didn't know if there was.
Fair enough. And each one size so.
I'm getting a phone call from one of the assistant prosecutors, which means that I think they're ready for us to do our plea that I'm here for.
Can I ask one question before you take off? You use the phrase a cannabis for worth of fentanyl, how much would you define that as being and what would you consider to be too small to charge as, as distribution?
Well, I don't have the numbers memorized, Daryl, but I do think the statute allows it to be charged as trafficking if it's in the albums of milligram. Um, heroin is like in the milligrams, so you can go look up the trafficking statute, the legislature changed that in twenty twenty. Um, and I mean, one of the beautiful things about that is it gets around our Good Samaritan law. Because it doesn't count trafficking in the Good Samaritan law, so if you take somebody to the hospital for a blunt overdose, now you get charged with trafficking. Just adding to the deaths. It's getting around the whole point of Good Samaritan, but again, Mr. Larson is correct, that's the legislature attorney of the police. Can't blame them for being, doing what they're told, that part I'll agree with, so that's fine with the legislature, but if you go look at the statute. You can literally have thousands of amount of, uh, heroin than you can fentanyl. And they, they just keep making it smaller, there was a proposal to make it an even smaller amount, I don't think it's passed through the legislature yet this year, but. What's that?
What'd you say?
Oh, I said an ant's fart.
Ant's fart's like a fentanyl.
How much is an ant's?
They can carry a lot. No, 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 not how much they can carry, they can carry. Yeah, I don't, I would imagine. It might weigh something, anyway.
They had a purpose for it.
Yeah, they did.
Yep, Brandon.
Thank you for giving us both for, for readers and viewers.
Uh, yeah.